I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Bishop? Ms. Duval?
Here.
Mr. Lazo?
Here.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Ms. Pellican?
Present.
Mr. Thomo?
Present.
Mr. Wang?
Present.
Six present, one absent.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Robert G. McKinnon Council Chamber, Tuesday, November 1st, 2016, School Committee Meeting. I'd like everybody to join me in a pledge of leaders of the flag. Moving on to public input, is there anybody that would like to address the Southbridge School Committee? If there's nobody at this time, moving on to discussion minutes, October 4th, 2016, reorganization meeting. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to these minutes? If not, move on to October 4th, 2016, regular meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to this, these minutes? If there's no discussion, moving on to chairman's announcements. I have no announcements at this time. We'll move on to agenda item number six, receivers' announcements. I don't receive her.
Do we have to accept these minutes?
No.
Okay.
Normally, we would. Under the circumstances, we don't.
It used to be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the rest of the board. I just want to take an opportunity to introduce our new student representative tonight, Mr. Harold Rodriguez. Harold is a lifelong Southbridge resident and he's also a senior at Southbridge High School. We felt it very important to include student voice as a part of the receivership process. I know that you've had student representatives in the past and we wanted to again have students be a part of this governance process. And we asked the students to write an essay about what they would contribute to school committee meetings. And Harold's essay noted his goal was to assist in crafting a positive reputation of the school and that's something that we're all working together collectively to do. So Harold has an update for us tonight about the events that are going on at Southbridge High School. Harold?
All right. So it's an honor to be in this position representing my school. I feel I was best fit for this position for, I possess a vision for every student and not only for the students, I feel like can provide better guidance for each student's success. I'm looking, I'm looking to change Southbridge High School for a positive change. I'm honored to be, be in this position. Now, Spirit Week was a success for most, most of the students that participated were flawless and I didn't, I never really witnessed so much students participate ever. The homecoming game was phenomenal for many attended. Yet again, the game, we lost, but the players will seek victory through this loss in the future. We plan to finish off strong. The girls volleyball team has successfully made it to the tournament, so that's another thing to consider. The homecoming dance was a success where many participated and enjoyed it. I did miss it due to a situation I had to address, but I'm grateful to hear it was a success for those who went.
Thank you, Harold. So I just want to echo Harold's comments about homecoming this past week. I was able to attend the homecoming pep rally. I just want to give a huge shout out to Kenny Allard, Senior Class President, Mrs. McDireman. She is our Student Council Advisor and they just did an outstanding job with the pep rally. A lot of school spirit. Dr. Townsend got everybody screaming and it was a great, great day. And then the homecoming game was fabulous. Got to crown the homecoming king and queen with Dr. Townsend. Just a lot of spirit. The team played incredible football the first half. And yet, we lost. It was still a fantastic game and a fantastic time to actually see a lot of graduates from Southbridge High School come back. Even Mr. Danby, our Assistant Principal's grandpa, who graduated in like 49 or 50, something like long time ago, even he was there and it was great, great to meet him. So it was all around great evening. So I just have a couple of updates for the board. Our turnaround plan progress is underway. We are focusing on four key priority areas, one of them being creating a personalized and supportive learning environment for all students, creating tiered systems of support, providing adequate social services. Our Social and Emotional Learning Director, Ms. Nikki Murphy, has just done an incredible job this year, working with our six new clinical staff, restructuring our Tier One systems of support, and also ensuring that all students are getting the Tier Two and Tier Three systems of support that are needed. We're looking at data, monitoring students' progress, and really looking at promoting a lot more connectivity between home and school. A lot of home visits have been done. I've done a lot of community meetings. On the 19th, I went to Brookside Terrace. On the 20th, I went to Community Connections Downtown. And on the 26th, I was at the library, meeting with different community members. So we're really trying to do a lot of outreach with the community. We're also looking at creating a pipeline of educators to continue to attract and recruit highly effective teachers and leaders in the district, looking at overhauling our curriculum, instruction, and assessment system, and really focusing on the management of the district, ensuring that it's functioning in a systemic and coherent manner and in a transparent manner. So those are the four priorities that we've been focusing on. We started our Superintendent's Roundtable. And the Superintendent's Roundtable is a group of community constituents made up of our town manager, we have students, we have community members, teachers, our administrative team and cabinet. And the focus of that group is really to work on monitoring the progress of the turnaround plan and to really seek input on significant changes that are up and coming in regards to the turnaround plan, such as extended school day and our new compensation model. So that roundtable has met for the first time and it was a successful meeting. We also are still in the planning stages of the alternative school and we have a meeting later this week to make some final decisions and we'll have an update for the school committee on the alternative school programming in December. And I was able to present to the State Board of Education this past Tuesday and just great, great comments coming from Malden. The State Board of Education is extremely pleased with the progress that we're making in Southbridge and the update was very, very well received. So that was an excellent day for us. We have had great success with our breakfast in the classroom. Our percentages are above 90% in the two schools that we've implemented them in, in the middle school and at the West Street School. Our high school students, when the commissioner came and did a visit, we had high school students actually eat lunch with the commissioner and there was a lot of really positive feedback from high school students about the culture and climate of the, of the school. Lot of improvements from last year. We still have tremendous work to do, especially around instruction and improvement, improving student learning outcomes. But a lot of hard work has been done by the high school administration to really address the climate and culture and I think the students would all attest that there's been significant improvements this year. Our Fundamentals of Aviation course, our partnership with Arrow Venture, we have 26 students enrolled in that. They're going to be gaining credits, college credits, and also flight time towards their license, which is a really exceptional partnership. We're really excited about it. We're also in the planning stages of starting an early college program in partnership with Quinn-Singhamon Community College, where students will be able to attain 25 college credits along three different pathways, healthcare, manufacturing, and I think then general credits. And that will begin in January. We also have been celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Our guest, Raoul Gonzalez, will be speaking at the middle high school about how his heritage influences his artwork. The district administrative team has been doing a lot of building walkthroughs, looking at instruction, providing feedback to staff. All teacher ed eval plans were due this past Saturday. And we've also conducted our first instructional rounds at the middle school, which was a very, a very great day for us and a huge success. Got a lot of good feedback and we were able to share that with the middle school staff. This past week, our Special Education Coordinated Program Review took place. The Department of Education was here on site. I just want to send a tremendous thanks to Colleen Culligan, Kelly Cooney, the administrative team, and also all of the teachers and staff who participated in all of the interviews and meetings that we were required to do. Our Dual Language Committee is well underway in the planning process of rolling out our first dual language program next year. And we had a great celebration that Espira led on October 20th at the library to celebrate Day of the Dead. It was a great success. And today, this was a really exciting thing. Today, we installed Wi-Fi for the first time in two of our elementary schools. That will be completed Thursday, which we're really excited about. Now, we can really begin to take effective use of the Chromebooks that we have also rolled out for our students. And this year, we will be moving to computer-based testing as part of our state assessments, so we'll be well-prepared to do that. Our school attendance is, is going very well. It's up from last year at the high school and just slightly up at the middle school. We are in the process of putting together a policy review committee to begin looking at the school committee policies in the district and we'll be working closely with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and we will have representatives from the school board as a part of that process and updating and reviewing all of our policies. Professional development, we had a huge, hugely successful ALIS training that was led by Dan Dede. Dan, thank you for all the tremendous efforts. On the 7th of October, all staff and Trinity Catholic Academy participated. And I just also want to thank the, the Police Department and all of the partners that contributed to this. It was a tremendously successful day. We've had RBT training, our administrators are going through supervision and evaluation training. And on November 4th, we're going to have targeted intensive professional development for staff. And we're going to be also working with the Institute for Learning out of the University of Pittsburgh to begin to address teachers' capacity in instituting and implementing the Common Core standards in the classroom. In your packet for your review is the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Quarterly Report. And that's all for my receivers' updates. And before we go on, I just want to dismiss Harold and say thank you so much for your updates. We look forward to them every month. All right.
I'd just like to take a second to congratulate you and welcome you to the Southbridge School Committee. It's going to be awesome working together, but I'm going to give you some advice, don't be so nervous. It's really, relax. It's fun, it's fun. Any school committee members, any comment?
We don't bite.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven, new business. A 2016 MCAS Park Scores. Dr. Marinelli. Sorry about that, it's Marinelli. We have a lot of Marinellis in town.
It used to be Marinelli, generations ago, so your intuition is right. So, good evening Chairman Lazo, members of the school committee. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. We're going to pick up where we left off in the last presentation by looking at the assessment and accountability data from spring 2016. From my perspective, there are really three objectives to the presentation tonight. The first is to present the current state of affairs regarding the districts and the schools within the district's performance, so that we can begin a transparent dialogue between the school committee and our new leadership team about that performance. And most importantly, I think, highlight how some of our current initiatives address the areas of concern that you'll see in the data. It's important to remember, before we get started, these are spring 2016 data, so they don't reflect any progress that we've made as part of the turnaround, but it's a helpful, I think, baseline to establish so that as we progress in our work, you can see what we're trying to progress from. I've organized the presentation by a series of guiding questions. We don't need to go into them now, but as we go through the presentation, you'll see they, they help organize the work. I thought we'd start by just briefly reviewing some enrollment and demographic information about the district. You may know this already, but I think it's helpful context before diving into the data results. This table looks at a profile of district enrollment, student enrollment from 2012 to 2016. It includes both total enrollment across the district, that's the bottom row in bold, as well as enrollment at individual schools. And in the far right column, you can see the change in enrollment between 2015 and 2016. I think the thing I want to call your attention to is that between 2015 and 2016, across the district, enrollment declined by 63 students. It is, appears to be part of a, an ongoing trend of slightly declining enrollment that began in 2012. There are annual fluctuations within the schools, so I didn't see any kind of pronounced trend there, but I just wanted to point this out. In terms of the characteristics of the student population, in 2016, 52% of Southbridge students were from Hispanic backgrounds. That was a slight increase of a little over a percent from 2015. 42% of students were white or Caucasian. That was actually a decline of about 3% from 2015. And there are small percentages of students from non-Hispanic, multiracial backgrounds, African-American, or Asian backgrounds. In terms of student subgroups, in 2016, about 21% of the students in Southbridge were identified as students with disabilities. That was roughly the same percentage as in 2015. Somewhat notably though, the percentage of English language learners increased from 14% in 2015 to almost 22% in 2016. So that's about an 8% percentage point increase. We don't yet have information from the state about the percentage of our students that qualify as economically disadvantaged or high needs, but in 2015, 61.4% of students qualified as economically disadvantaged and 73.3 as high needs. Just as a refresher, the high needs category combines information from the top three categories. So I thought that would be helpful to review, just as background context. Now we can actually start diving into the data. And the first question I thought we'd look at is how did Southbridge students perform on the 2016 PARK? So I hope you like bar charts, because you're going to see a lot of them. Just as a reminder, PARK is the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness of College and Careers standardized test used by a consortium of states. The, the idea behind PARK is to evaluate higher-order thinking skills that are aligned with Common Core state standards. And as the name would suggest, it's designed to predict college and career readiness. As I'm sure you all know, Massachusetts' relationship with the PARK has been pretty short-lived. It's going to be replaced this spring by Next Gen MCAS. But by, by most accounts, Next Gen MCAS is, is going to be designed to be a PARK-like assessment. Quick comparison and contrast between PARK and MCAS, because there are some differences. If you think about the ELA assessments on PARK, the assessments have more short answer and longer essays. There's more writing in general. On MCAS, the ELA assessment was predominantly multiple choice. In terms of points, roughly 50% of points on the grades three through eight PARK ELA tests come from writing prompts, as opposed to a little less than a third on the MCAS. In terms of the math assessments, on the math PARK, students are actually required to show their work and demonstrate correct reasoning. By comparison on MCAS, it was really just merely a matter of selecting the right answer. So those are a couple just basic distinctions between the assessment. One important piece of context, I hope you can see this slide, that's helpful to know is that because PARK is a more rigorous assessment and a new assessment, proficiency rates on PARK are generally lower than they are on legacy assessments like MCAS. So I've taken this figure actually from a report, from a study that I contributed to before coming to Southbridge, because it helps quantify how much lower the proficiency rates are on PARK. This figure shows how students' scores on legacy assessments that were administered in four different states, Massachusetts, New Mexico, Delaware, and Maryland, in 2014, differed on average from student scores on PARK assessment that were, and the Smarter Balance assessment. I think one of these states, Delaware, administered the Smarter Balance in 2015. So if you look here, I don't know if you can make it out, but students' scores on the legacy assessments in 2014 is on the horizontal axis. Their scores on the Parker SBAK in 2015 are on the vertical axis. And the way you'd interpret this chart is if, imagine Massachusetts, in 2014, 50% of students scored proficient on the MCAS. And in the next year, 50% of students scored, met or exceeded expectations on the PARK, the dot representing the combination of their two scores would fall right on that 45-degree line, that dashed line. The fact that we see all of the, all the dots below, that dashed line indicates that the scores on PARK and SBAK are lower than they were on the legacy assessments in all of these states. There are two dots actually for each state. The green dots represent ELA scores and the purple dots represent math scores. And if you look over in the text box, the information there just kind of quantifies how much lower those scores are. So in Massachusetts, for example, on the ELA assessment in 2014, 66% of students were proficient or above. By comparison, on the 2015 PARK, 58% of students met or exceeded expectations. So it's an eight percentage point decline. In math, in Massachusetts, on the 2014 MCAS, 57% of students scored proficient or above. On the 2015 PARK, 49% of students met or exceeded expectations. So again, about an eight percentage point decline. So I just point that out as context, because when we look at the Southbridge data, you're going to look at MCAS results, you're going to look at PARK results, there's going to be a decline. And now you can put that in context with an eight percentage point decline that happened in Massachusetts. Does that make sense? Okay. So let's start in terms of the Southbridge data. Let's start by looking at a district-wide snapshot of performance on the grades three through eight PARK. This chart depicts both math and ELA scores. Starting with this slide and for the rest of the slides, math is in purple and ELA is in blue. So the first two things that stand out to me as I look at this chart are that, one, students' performance on math and ELA are similar, although ELA is a bit higher. You can see that by the height of the blue bars being a little bit higher than the purple bars on the approached expectations and met expectations categories. If you remember from the slide a second ago, across the districts that administered MCAS in 2015, 58% of students met or exceeded expectations in ELA. That percentage in Southbridge is 28%. 28% of students across grades three through eight met or exceeded expectations in ELA. Similarly, across the state in 2015, among the districts that took PARK, 49% met or exceeded expectations in math. That percentage in Southbridge is 24. So quite lower than the state. We knew that, we're in receivership. I think an equally troubling thing to me as I look at this slide is the percentage of students in both subjects who either partially met or did not yet meet expectations. So for ELA, 44% of students only partially met or did not yet meet expectations and a full 50% of students in grades three through eight in math only partially met or did not yet meet expectations. I'm going to keep going here, but if you, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to, to jump in. If we stay with a district-wide snapshot, again, looking at grades three through eight, but we look at performance across student subgroups, we see a few additional patterns of concerns. We just established that performance for students overall is low, but if you can make out the, the two sets of bars that are a little bit left of center, those represent the performance of students with disabilities and current and former English language learners, their performance is very low. Similarly, if you look at the performance of students in our two most predominant racial categories, those from Hispanic backgrounds and those from white or Caucasian backgrounds, you can see that Hispanic students underperform relative to, to white students. A final thing that stands out here is if you, if you can see the two clusters of bars on the far right, male and female, males underperform relative to females in English Language Arts. Their math performance is pretty similar, but definitely, definitely a discrepancy in ELA. That's not unique to Southbridge. You see that same pattern in other districts and across the state nonetheless. We see it here, I think it's worth noting. We, we don't want there to be discrepancies in performance by gender. I think it's really helpful to, you know, a lot of times, district results are compared to the state, but we know districts are quite different. Massachusetts has a lot of Westons and Newtons, and so those are included in the average. So what I thought would be helpful to do would be to compare Southbridge's performance to that of the commissioner's districts. Just as a refresher, we are now one of the Level Five districts, but these are our other comparison commissioners' districts, other Level Five districts, Holyoke and Lawrence, Level Four districts, Boston, Fall River, New Bedford, Springfield, sorry, Worcester. And the Level Three districts are Brockton, Lowell, and Lynn. And here is the performance of those districts on grades three through eight PARK 2016. These are the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA and math. The Southbridge bars are the cluster of bars that are the fourth from the right. The bars indicating the state averages are the second from the right. Again, I'll point out, these are 2015 PARK scores for the state that I brought with me from my former job. I have not been able to find the state, like any information about the state reporting these scores. And I think it's because in Massachusetts, this is inference, because districts had the choice of taking MCAS or PARK, there isn't a state representative sample of districts taking PARK, so the state doesn't report a statewide PARK average. So there's a year discrepancy here, I just wanted to point that out. Fall River did not take PARK in 2016, so there are no bars there. And I'd also want to point out, I added North Adams. North Adams is not a commissioner's district, but like Southbridge, it's somewhat geographically isolated, it serves a high-need student population, so I was just kind of curious how our score is compared to North, North Adams. The takeaways here really are that our performance is low even compared to the lowest performing districts in the state. That's the big takeaway. Only Holyoke's performance is, is poorer on the 2016 PARK. So let's look a little bit at how performance on the PARK in 2016 compared to 2015 MCAS performance. To do that, it's helpful to really break the results out by school. So here you've got the percentage of students scoring in the top two performance categories on the 2015 MCAS and the 2016 PARK. This is just, these are, this slide is ELA scores, the next one will show you math scores. So a couple of things stand out to me. First, Charlton, both Charlton Street, Charlton Street School and the middle school saw 12 percentage point declines between their 2015 ELA-MCAS scores and their 2016 ELA-PARK scores. Interestingly, West Street School, whose 2015 MCAS scores were lower, didn't experience a decline. 33% of students on both assessments fell into the top two performance categories. So I should also say, you are the first audience that we're sharing this data with. The, the building principals have not gotten a presentation from me yet, they, they will be soon. So we're really just in the early stages of digesting these results. We don't yet have hypotheses for some of the discrepancies we see. That's a really important next step, is to bring these results to the schools and try to understand them and try to think through what explains them and how to improve them. This is a comparable slide, but for students' performance in math. Couple notable things to me, first, Charlton Street School had substantially higher performance on the 2015 math MCAS than, than in other schools. But in terms of the MCAS and PARK comparison, in each of the schools, the scores declined between 2015 and 2016. I mean, the other thing that really stands out is the, the performance in the middle school is quite, quite low. And so in 20, on the 2016 PARK, only 18% of students met or exceeded expectations in math. That obviously needs to change. Let's shift gears a little bit and talk about grade 10 MCAS. We'll look at MCAS results in ELA, math, and science. This chart depicts performance in all of those subjects. ELA is red, math is blue, science is yellow. Again, this is, while this is, this is the percentage of students who score in the four different performance categories on, on MCAS. I think the thing that really stands out here is that proficiency is much higher in ELA than in math and science. And you can see that by the height of the red bar in the proficient category. 78% of students were proficient or above in ELA as compared with 37% in math and 37% in science. It's important to, to note though, that while the percent proficient or above is the same in math and science, if you look, you can see the blue bar, there, there is a proportion of students in math who are scoring in the advanced category, not many in science. So while the combination- So while the combination of the two categories is the same in one subject, math, there are quite a few more students scoring in advanced. I think the other big takeaway here, though, again, is the high percentage of students who are scoring in the warning and failing category, especially in math and science. You probably can't see the gridlines from where you're sitting, but the percentage of science students, grade ten, scoring in the warning and failing category is just under a quarter, and it's just under a third for math students.
Excuse me, Dr. Merrill.
Yeah?
The science scores. We have a nine in parentheses. This is the first year that we allowed ninth graders to take a, we've been using the biology test in the district for quite a while, the grade ten. And I was not in favor of the change we made, as I had expressed to you. Do we have any further breakout as to how well the ninth-grade students performed on these tests?
I can show you that breakout. It's easy to do with the MCAS, with the state's reporting metric. I don't have that in the presentation here, but you can definitely break the science scores out by ninth grade and tenth grade. So we can do that. Sorry, I don't have that in this presentation. I don't remember the results off the top of my head, but we can certainly look at that. I can send that to you.
Well, I'd like the taxpayers to have it sent to them.
Yep.
We spent an awful lot of money on a grade-nine curriculum change that the educational experts brought to us, and I acquiesced, along with other members on the committee, to their desires. I have looked at the scores, and I'm saddened by them, as I had expressed to you last month.
Yep.
And I was hoping that we were going to discuss that before tonight's meeting. But it was a major shift, and I'm not sure, personally, I think it was an awful shift, but that's something that the receiver and yourself and the other administrators, the professional educational experts are going to have to decide. But I'm aware of it, I'm watching it, and I am going to report on it. It's a lot of money we spent. Thank you.
Yep. So I appreciate your comment, and as I mentioned in our email exchange, I think there already has been some healthy discussion about that change among the science teachers. There's a new STEM curriculum coordinator, Dan Wally, who's tasked with making sure the curriculum is appropriate, given where students are, and that is a subject that we're going to reconsider, a topic that we're going to reconsider. Math this year has been the bigger focus, and math performance, I think, justifies that decision, but science needs to follow soon thereafter. So we will absolutely be looking at that closely. Dr. Heizinger, do you want to add anything?
Mr. Bishop, we can have that information for you at the next school committee meeting and share that with the board and the public.
I think it's important. The taxpayers gave us $200,000 unexpectedly last year from the town manager's office. We subsequently returned a giant portion of that because we couldn't come to collective agreement as to what we should be doing with that funding. It's my understanding that at the middle school, we still do not have textbooks for students at those three-grade levels, which is, to me, unexplainable. I think our students deserve better, the money was there. And again, I'm going to continue to call these folks the educational experts. They came to us and did not want to purchase textbooks for the middle school, and we had the money and the willingness to go forward, and we were rebuked. And I was stunned then, I remain stunned, and when I looked at the eighth-grade science scores and the ninth-grade science scores, I remain even more stunned. I'm not putting this on the students. Those scores are not the students' fault. They are the educators and their overseers. Thank you.
One thing you'll see, so it's this slide here, actually, that compares the MCAS scores between 2015 and 2016, and you actually, you can see, Mr. Bishop, that science scores did decline between the two years. So these aren't breaking the science scores out by subject, which would be instructive, and we can absolutely do that and share that at the next school committee meeting. But it's obviously not encouraging to see MCAS scores declining from thirty-nine percent proficient or advanced in 2015 to thirty-seven percent proficient and advanced. I mean, the basic story here is there's not much change, but it's certainly not encouraging that in math and science, there were declines between 2015 and 2016. Again, I think it's helpful to compare Southbridge's performance to the performance of the commissioners' districts. So this chart has the same setup as the one you saw previously. The bars depicting Southbridge are four from the right. Because we're looking at MCAS scores now, these are from 2016, the state scores are from 2016. I think the first thing to do, if you can, it's a pretty busy chart, but if you can spot Southbridge's ELA bar and compare the height to the height of the bars across the other districts, you will see that most other districts are higher, we're ballpark, but we're a little bit lower. There are two districts, Lawrence and New Bedford, that have lower ELA scores. If you now try to shift your attention to Southbridge's math score, the percent proficient or above in math, and compare that to the height of the other purple bars, you'll see it's really low. It's, in fact, it's the lowest, it's the lowest in the state. Only New Bedford's is even close, really. So we've got our work cut out for ourselves in math, and as you'll see when we shift gears, math has been a huge priority of our work this coming year. Just to look at one more slide regarding MCAS, how has Southbridge students' performance on the grade-ten MCAS changed over time? This chart depicts ELA, math, and science performance from 2013 to 2016. The ELA trend is in blue, the math trend is in yellow, the science trend is in purple. As you can see, ELA, the percent proficient or advanced in ELA, has been increasing a little bit, mainly stable. Most of the gains that you see in ELA were actually between 2013 and 2014, it's been pretty stable since then. In science, there was a short-lived gain between 2013 and 2014, but there's been a steady decline since then. And math has been on a steady decline since 2013. If you compare those trends to the state trends, the state trends now are the same colors, but the lines with diamond points in them, you'll see that all of our trends are below the state averages. We know that, we'd expect that. ELA is the closest. But I think the thing to note here is that the state trends are stable, and Southbridge's in math and science are not. I want to shift gears, how am I doing on time? I want to shift gears and talk a little bit about the results from some of the accountability data. The state's accountability framework has a lot in it. We don't have enough time tonight to go into all of it. Annually, the state looks in every district, whether they're closing proficiency gaps in ELA, math, and science, whether they're increasing the percentage of students scoring in the advanced category and decreasing the percentage of students scoring in the warning/failing categories. Districts get extra credit if they're doing either of those things. They look at changes in growth, they look at whether schools and districts are meeting assessment targets, they look at graduation and dropout rates, and they look at students' language proficiency as measured by the access. This is for English language learners primarily. I'm just going to talk briefly about the first two, and then I'll shift gears and tell you about our current initiatives. So has Southbridge met targets for narrowing proficiency gaps? Let me say a quick word about what I mean by narrowing proficiency gaps. Beginning in 2011, the state expected every school, district, and subgroup of students within each to have the discrepancy between its current performance, its current proficiency rate, and fully proficient by spring 2017. So if you look at this chart and imagine, this depicts the math performance for students in a district, if in 2011, seventy-six percent of students were proficient, that would mean, to reach full proficiency, they would have to gain twenty-four percentage points. So the expectation from the state was that by spring 2017, the district would have halved that gap, so increased from seventy-six percent to eighty-eight percent proficient, a gain of twelve percentage points. So once you know the spring 2017 goal, you can map out a series of annual targets that then the state looks to see whether you're making those targets from year to year. And if you had a subgroup of students whose performance was below that district-wide performance, so imagine that that dashed pink line represents the proficiency of disadvantaged students, then the annual gains that those students would have to make are even steeper from one year to the next in order to meet that six-year benchmark. Does that make sense? The state has a particular way of measuring progress towards narrowing proficiency gaps. I won't go into the details. It's called the CPI, the Composite Performance Index. In the interest of time, I mean, I'll go into it if you want, but it's basically a way of assigning points to students based on how close they are to being proficient or advanced. So in an extreme scenario, if all of your students in a district were proficient or higher, your CPI would be a hundred. This is actually the way the data look in the DESI security portal. Again, I could go into detail here. Basically, you get your baseline CPI, that's your score in 2011, then the state will tell you your CPI over the past two years, whether you made progress, how far away you are from your current target, and how far away you are from your six-year goal. And then in the far-right column, it issues a verdict, whether you're on target, whether you're improving below target, whether there's been no change, whether there's a drop in So that's the premise. Basically, district-wide snapshot here. In ELA, our gaps improved from 2015 to 2016. For students overall and for most student subgroups, however, they remained well below our six-year targets. There was no change for Caucasian students or for economically disadvantaged students in ELA. In math, there was no change in proficiency gaps for students overall and for students in most subgroups. However, current and former English language learners and students with disabilities improved from 2015 to 2016 but were below target. In science, the gaps actually widened for students overall and for high-need, economically disadvantaged, and white students. There was no change for Hispanic students. Current and former English language learners improved but remained well below six-year In terms of extra credit, again, extra credits awarded for increasing the proportion of students scoring advanced and decreasing the proportion of students scoring in the warning and failing categories. All the extra credit that was awarded was in ELA. The percentage of current and former English language learners scoring advanced increased slightly from 1.1% in 2015 to 1.5% in 2016. Gains are good, that's a pretty small gain, .4 percentage points. Students in a number of different subgroups that were scoring in the warning/failing categories decreased. So current and former English language learners, fifty-five percent of those scored in the warning/failing categories in 2015, that declined to forty-four percent in 2016. Sixty-two percent of students with disabilities were in the warning/failing category in 2015, that declined to fifty-three percent in 2016. Thirty-two percent of students from Hispanic backgrounds were in the warning/failing category in ELA in 2015, that declined to twenty-eight percent in 2016. So all those declines are good, and we're pleased that's the right direction. However, I would say it's still troubling that between twenty-eight percent and over half of our students in these subgroups are scoring in the warning/failing categories. So moving in the right direction, but an awful lot of work to do. There was no extra credit awarded in math or science. Okay, so I've probably taken up more of my time. I'll just run through these quickly. How are we addressing these areas of concern? I think the short answer is there are a lot of areas of concern, so this is not a matter of a district where there's an issue that an intervention can resolve. We are in receivership, we need a comprehensive solution, we have one, it's the turnaround plan. Having said that, there are areas of focus within the turnaround plan. Mathematics is one, across all grades. Early literacy is another. And I think a basic way to summarize our approach is we're taking a multi-pronged approach to strengthening the instructional core. By that, I mean, we are doing a lot with regard to professional development. We're investing extensive time and resources and funds in curricular development. We're providing a lot of feedback on instruction, and we're in the process of engineering a culture shift for classrooms and schools. I'll say a little bit more about each of those. So in terms of the extensive curriculum and assessment development, as I mentioned, there's been an intensive focus on promoting literacy in the lower grades. There's a lot going on there. Teachers in Eastford Road, West Street School, and Charlton Street School are working with experts in the Hill Literacy Group to do a complete overhaul of literacy instruction. They're doing things like creating literacy leadership teams, creating building-level literacy plans, training all of those teachers in how to assess students' literacy, and then target specific supports at students depending on their literacy levels. So there's an awful lot of work going on in the lower schools related to literacy. In terms of grades one through twelve math curriculum, we have a lot of work going on, creating Common Core-aligned curricular units and common assessments. That's happening across the grade levels. A lot of it is happening voluntarily. Teachers are committing time on Saturdays. We had a lot of teachers in over the summer. They're doing phenomenal work. Part of that work involves implementing a new teaching and learning cycle where teachers are getting results from these common assessments. They're able to review the results immediately, they're able to identify the standards and the skills that students are deficient in, so they can then develop a plan for reteaching those things that are still deficient, and modifying the plan for the subsequent lessons so that student skills are strengthened. And we have this ongoing cycle of assessment, so where you know where students are, there are not going to be surprises. Most of that work has concentrated in grades one through five, but we've begun it with the middle and high school as well. In the middle and high school, we've adopted a rigorous Common Core-aligned curriculum called Engage New York. It's free, it's available online. It's a big development for us. Substantial professional development, Dr. Heizinger mentioned that the grades six through twelve humanities teachers, we've just recently, in fact, our first session with the Institute for Learning at University of Pitt is this coming Saturday. That will be a really intensive effort to train teachers in the Common Core shifts, the instructional shifts that go along with it, identifying rigorous texts, identifying high-quality writing exercises for students. And then, once they have that base of knowledge, we're going to begin a similar process to what we've done in math, actually developing new curricular units and lessons. There's a lot of content PD underway for grade six through twelve math teachers. We're working with a renowned expert, Dr. Chen, to bolster teachers' mathematics content and just kind of renew their excitement in their subject. We have a new teacher induction and mentor program. We've got tons of targeted PD for staff who work with English language learners, the social and emotional staff, the sped staff. We've got tech-specific PD. Dr. Heizinger also mentioned, our admins, our building admins, all of them, APs and principals, are participating in a forty-two-hour renoun course on analyzing teaching for student results. Really comprehensive. Today, they were actually writing up practice feedback that they're going to give to teachers based on observations that they've done, and getting, like, thorough critique of their Dr. Heizinger also mentioned, we're doing a lot of observing of instruction and providing feedback. We've got bi-monthly walkthroughs with building and central office admins, we're going to include teachers in those soon. We're doing monthly instructional rounds on a problem of practice that a school identifies. And we're about to begin the receivers' review process, which, as I'm sure you all know, is an accelerated effort to get as many supports as possible to teachers who are struggling so that they can improve. And lastly, we're engineering a culture shift. I think we touched on this in my last presentation. There's been a transition to non-punitive responses to behavioral infractions, really across the board, but especially in the lower grades. The middle school implemented an advisory model this year, there's going to be one in the high school next year. That is intended to really help monitor students' non-academic needs and make sure they're getting both academic and non-academic supports. And extensive training for staff in PBIS and restorative justice. So that's a snapshot. Happy to take any questions, but hopefully that was instructive.
Dr. Marinelli, I just want to take a moment to thank you for this very comprehensive presentation. Having given many in my career as an assistant superintendent, I know the time and effort it takes to put into a presentation that's this comprehensive, so thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And I just want to say, you know, even though the results are not where we want them to be and where we need them to be, a lot of work is currently underway. them to be and where we need them to be, a lot of work is currently underway to make very rapid and accelerated changes to the outcomes that you see here. So, I just want to thank you for your patience as we go through this process. As you can see, we have many things underway to address them, and I just want to thank the community also for their patience as we really begin the accelerated turnaround of the Southbridge Public Schools. Thank you. Chairman.
Any other, Mr. Bishop?
I just want to also thank Dr. Marinelli. I sat through many of these over my years in education, and this was certainly one of the more comprehensive and better-presented. I was going to say something, and I think I just had a brain.
Senior moment?
It's been a senior moment. Oh, what I did want to say is, I think the public should know that all of the scores that were reported this evening are all scores that were earned prior to the district being placed into receivership. The proof will be in the pudding a year from tonight, when Dr. Marinelli comes here and shows us all these shining, new, higher scores, or you're out of here.
Fair enough. That is what we're here to do. Fair enough.
Any other discussion? Any questions? Doc?
Just one, sort of maybe, comment slash question. One of the things that's always been frustrating to me, when I see these kinds of reports, and we've seen them for years and years and years, is that you're looking at, you're not looking at cohorts of students in terms of how they're marching through the system. And to me, that would be, it would be nice to see some kind of presentation or maybe a hindsight reconstruction of data, say, this year's 10th graders, they take MCAS, and you've got all these categories. If you go back and track the cohorts of students in terms of how they did in the previous years up to that point, I've always felt like that kind of analysis would be much more informative in terms of targeting, where are we failing? Where are our specific problems? And I've yet to see any of that kind of analysis done by anybody. And is that something that you, I mean, I know now you're switching to a different next-generation MCAS and all this, so it might be difficult to do that going forward. But we have such a transient population in Southbridge. We had students, I mean, one thing we had last year in the high school, middle high school, 55 students came in from out of district that all had IEPs. This was something that the district, we weren't prepared for it, we didn't have a budget for it, we didn't have anything. And so, to compare that year's students' performance in 10th grade to the previous year's 10th graders is comparing apples and oranges, and it doesn't really inform much. And so, I just maybe throw that out as a kind of question, comment, to see what you feel about that kind of analysis and whether it would be useful at this point in order to say, okay, are we struggling in the sort of the third to fourth grade transitions? Where are these things dropping off? Because if you look at the early performance in the early grades, if the kids can't read and can't do math then, well, no kidding, they're going to be not doing well later on, you know? So, that's where the targeted intervention needs to be, and I'm wondering what kinds of, is it, is it students that, you know, say, have lived their whole life in Southbridge? I'd like to see that category sort of, you know, grown up in the system. Are they any different from other ones that are sort of moving in and out? That's a, I guess, I know it's not really a very direct question.
As a trained researcher, that question goes right to the heart. I mean, I think you're 100% on the money. I agree with you entirely. We need to, we need to start doing those types of analyses. They would be very instructive. I love the questions you identified. We have some severe data system challenges in Southbridge that we are hoping to address in the coming year that will greatly enhance our ability to do those types of analyses. They would be hard to do right, they would be really labor-intensive to do right now. They shouldn't be. We need the ability to do those types of analyses. So, I would love to set up a time with you. In fact, maybe we could actually start, the district hasn't had, that I've seen, again, I've only been here less than half a year, but I haven't seen anything that anybody's ever done that looks anything like a research agenda, like a series of guiding questions that were...
Right. And my frustration, this is my third year on the school committee, has been, I've been asking for this for, ever since day one, and it's just nonexistent.
Yep.
And I'm glad to see we have somebody now who is going to maybe take that kind of approach. I think it'd be much more informative and really allow us to really target where our problems are.
Yeah, it would be. So, let's talk, and let's get a series of questions.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
I think, as soon as we get this new CIST, we need to make some strides with our data, but as soon as we've done that, we should begin that type of research agenda. I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, you know, nice presentation. I know it is, there's a lot of material there, hard for us to digest it all. Would these slides be available to us, maybe electronically?
Absolutely.
Are they going to be public?
Yep.
Okay.
And if you have questions that the presentation didn't address, I'm happy to investigate things for you or set up a time to actually look at the data together.
Yeah. And the other thing I just want to mention in terms of, and this has been one of my sort of criticisms of the state in terms of how they analyze certain types of data, in terms of percentages and so forth, and say, okay, like, a 39 to a 37% decline from one year to another in, say, 10th grade MCAS. Well, if there are only 100 students, that's two students. I mean, come on, we have to, I think some of this analysis should encompass some level of statistical relevance in terms of whether or not it's meaningful, in terms of a drop or an increase.
Yep.
And so, that's something that I see that's really, really seems to be missing too in terms of that level. Thank you.
Doc, just, I have one final question, I hope. The increase in ELL students from 14 to 22%, that seems rather staggering. I mean, I worked in the district for 30-plus years. Is it because we did a better job identifying ELL students, or is there any rationale? Is there some cause that we could come up with as to why we noted a significant increase like that?
Don't know. That's a plausible hypothesis. Has there been a demographer, has the town or the district ever worked with anybody to look at the changing characteristics of the student population? Have you seen anything like that before, Dr. Heisinga?
So, Mr. Bishop, are you talking about the increase in the percentage of ELL students that we currently have?
Yes.
Yes. So, a new identification process has been put in place since the state came in. They began working with us. This summer, we started doing a lot of testing of ELL students, and we are now finding there has been many, many ELL students that for years were not identified and were not receiving any services. Additionally, about this time of year, and again in February, we routinely see an influx of ELL students. So, it's a combination right now of both identification and the yearly influx of ELL students that many systems across the state are seeing.
Okay, thank you. Do you know, did that identification process begin last year? Would that have influenced the change that we see from 2015 to 2016?
It started when the state came in, and then intensively was put into place this summer upon our new ELL director's entrance.
Thank you.
Just one comment from the chair. I sit here and I'd rather not comment, just listen and give it an opportunity and be cautiously optimistic, but I share some frustration of a lot of citizens and a lot of people on committee. The past three superintendents all came in and said, "There's no curriculum. There's no tracking. There's no this, there's no that." And then they recreate, reinvent the wheel. And the state had the hand on the pulse of these operations because the past three superintendents before the receiver were basically handpicked by the state in giving to us. I was not on committee. But I saw this district evolve. I saw this district, we went to Taunton, and we looked at, Dale Hanley presented a tracking system that Taunton implemented that was impressive, and I caught a glance of it, you know, and it was much of what Dr. Page is talking about, where a third grader could go to a fifth grade class, third grade, fourth grade, to the fifth grade, all of a sudden, a red flag comes up. Why? All of a sudden, this student is a straight-A student, and now all of a sudden hits the fifth grade. Is it the teachers? Is it the curriculum? Is it the services? At least you can hone in on a student and save the student before the student cannot read, and then all of a sudden goes to six, seven with the social promotion, and then they're at the high school and they're saying, "I don't know how to read."
Yep.
So, I think that the frustration is that we've had so many, as Mr. Bishop says, educational professionals come in and tell us, "We know what we're doing. This is the way to do it." This is like round four. Three rounds, I wasn't even on a school committee. I ran to say, "Let's get some sanity in the school system, and if everybody knows their role and stays out of the other person's sandbox and allows them to do their job, it will work." Well, we did that, and we stayed out of this new school committee, had a different philosophy. But the commissioner didn't see it that way because he personally didn't like Bill and I, so receivership was the way to go. And now we're here. Now, I'm sitting here trying to be a businessman from Southbridge, keeping my nose clear of this, to watch the professionals go to work. I would love to support a finance director, a receiver, and, you know, I know you have to do your public relations and all that, but I've been around over 30 years in government. I was on town council. I've served in every capacity, chairman of the building committee, and I sit back and I watch this. And the ones that worry me the most are not the kids, it's not the parents, it's the professionals. One year we come in, it's race to the top, and then it's Common Core, and this is the federal government constantly force-feeding down our throats what we have to do through the state, then the state comes down and gives it to us, and then all of our professionals run around and try and acclimate to the next, latest, and greatest. So, here we are on the next curve. I'm cautiously optimistic. I hope that this all works and that we can get some sort of normalcy and erase the insanity that was here before I arrived, but it's tough. I'm listening and I'm watching, and when people tell me there was no curriculum and there are no statistics, and I saw all this before, 1,000 times. So, going forward, we will work hand-in-hand and try and accomplish the mission of turning this district around, but just be patient because some of us are very frustrated.
I understand.
Thank you. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to the business office, 7B, Mr. Dan Diddy update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Good to see you again. Just very quickly, this evening's update, I've included in the packet a year-to-date budget report, ran it in totals only so you don't have the 50-page detail as presented last month. I realize that you're just receiving this report this evening, so as in the past, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I do want to jump ahead to my third item very quickly, and a question that's been asked in the past relative to the legal fees, and I updated the spreadsheet earlier today. You won't see these adjustments in the budget report, but just want to make you aware that we were made aware by the accounting office at Morgan &amp; Brown, based in Boston, that there was an overbilling. I've made that notation here, so we have a credit of just about $7,600 that we'll be using. Those credits have not been applied yet, so if you look at this versus the budget report, you're going to see different numbers, but I've updated this for you manually in the Excel spreadsheet. So, again, and the reason for the error is that we are being billed, as I've noted here in my notes, at $400 an hour and not the $250 an hour. So, that's the reason for that discrepancy. I've also included in my report this evening a quick update from our facilities director as I report to you this evening. Again, happy to answer any questions that you have about that report. And as we go forward, and as I've explained in the past, these O&amp;M updates, if you will, will be part of my packet each month. Mr. Chair, but I'd like to spend the remainder of my discussion this evening talking about the FY '18 budget process, and I've included in your packet this evening a schedule for the FY '18 budget. And I'm going to turn over to the second page real quickly with the disclaimer that all dates and deadlines subject to revision as we go through the process. That being said, I think this is a fairly comprehensive budget calendar for the FY ' '18 budget process. We kick off next Tuesday, the 8th, at Central Office with the SLT, all key stakeholders. Couple things in this year's budget calendar. I've got a public kickoff at the library, tentatively scheduled for November 17th. And what I'd like to do is add our yet-to-be-scheduled meeting in December is do the, present to the school committee the budget kickoff to you as well. The draft budgets from administration are due to me just prior to the holiday break on December 16th at the close of business. As you know, in the latter part of January, typically, the third Monday in January, the governor's house budget is released. We'll get a sense then as to what the expectations are, what we're looking at for both state and local aid, and what our net school spending obligations are, and so on, so forth. Again, here's an example of subject to change. I've booked, and again, we can talk about this as a committee and as a team, three dates, excuse me, three dates in February, three consecutive evenings for budget presentations to the committee. Again, we can talk more about these dates, but I want to put it on your radar screen that there is the expectation that as we go forward with the '18 budget process, that administration will be presenting to you their draft budgets. In developing the '18 budget calendar, I did review the town charter, and looking at the charter where, you know, we're looking to get the budget to the manager by the 28th of February, if not sooner, to fulfill the obligation of the charter. Turning over and just skipping March, again, March is just a lot of activity updating the budget. Perhaps the Senate will have their numbers out then. Unlikely, typically, their numbers come out in April, and then there is the whole compromise committee. Again, looking at the charter and making some assumptions that we would present to Education and Human Services Subcommittee in April. What I'm doing this year, and you'll see it in the calendar, I've created these summits, as I'm calling them, these budget summits, in which case we'll convene the leadership team, all key stakeholders, to talk about the budget, where are we at, what's happening with the governance budget, what are we looking at for estimated revenues, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you'll see that I've convened throughout the process three budget summits. And again, tentative dates to share with the committee. We are looking to do, and I think this is probably a little bit different, Mr. Chair, but I'd like to present the budget from my colleagues to the town via a town meeting format. What does that mean? Essentially, we would have a moderator, and each administrator, each building principal would present his or her budget. They would simply go through each budget line. They would call out that number, and depending upon who's in the audience that night, they may raise their hand, and they'll say, "Hold." The moderator will just note that question, and after that administrator completes his or her budget presentation, they'll answer that question. Typically, in the past, I've done this in Auburn, and I would work with the moderator as we do this, but I think it's a nice way for the public to see line by line what's behind these numbers. So, that's something that's probably new and different in the budget process. We're looking to also, tentatively scheduled, as you know by law, the public hearing of the budget, which I have on the schedule here, booked for May 10th of 2017. By law, we need to get that posted several weeks in advance of that date. And again, that public hearing on the '18 budget will be held at the middle high school auditorium. And before you know it, we're into June. June is a crazy month. We're looking to wrap up the current fiscal year and get the new fiscal year started. But I think what's interesting here is that I've noted there is a date that on June 26th, we would be entering requisitions into KBS for the upcoming fiscal year, which is at least a month ahead of schedule, both this year and, I think, from previous years. And before you know it, it's FY '18, just like that. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, be happy to answer any questions. that. Mr. Chair, members of committee, be happy to answer any questions about the process here.
Dr. Page?
Yeah, actually, I'd, I'd like to, to thank you for a, a well-planned-out calendar. I think it's very useful, and I think it's going to be very useful for you and your administrative team to actually, you know, work through these, these items in a very, sort of coherent and cogent way with the, in the requisitions. One of the things that I would recommend is, like you mentioned with the town hall kind of presentation, is to, in areas where there are major changes or major requisitions and so forth that you're going to be asking, or we basically will be asking the town for, is to have good justification for that. And that be tied to the learning outcomes, or tied to the outcomes that are anticipated, and really the shortfalls that are experiencing, that we're experiencing that really prompt that, that budget adjustment request. And to, to me, that's, that's really the way to make the argument to the taxpayers as to, you know, this, this is, this is where we are, this is where we really need to be, and from a financial perspective, this is the investment we need to make in order to achieve that gap. And I, I just would make a recommendation that that presentation, even by the, the principals and whoever, be done kind of in that style. And I think you, you'll find that it'll be much more well-received by, by folks.
Thank you. And I just want to point out as well that as we begin the '18 budget process, we're going to create a link on the homepage, a Q&amp;A link. And as we begin and go through the process for the next several months, through the end of the fiscal year, as the public has any questions, that they can type in their questions on this link. It'll come to me automatically via email, and I'm happy to, and what I'll do is that, number one, I'll answer the question, and then number two, I'll keep a summary of, of all the questions that are being asked by, by the public as we go forward.
Mr. Vomel?
Thank you, Mr. Shevin. Mr. Deedy, if you could just refer to account 6051, I guess it's under central administrators. It says travel conferences. The original budget was for 6,500, and we've already expended 58, 52.
Right.
Who went where?
So, Chair, the reason for that is, number one, there are charges made to that line that should be made to some of the federal and state grants that we have received this year. So what we're going to do is that we're going to reverse some of those charges out of that line and, and back them into the 323 grant, which is a federal grant with a value of $615,000. Or it'll reverse to the 220 grant. Again, that's, that's the, the fund code that I'm referring to when I, when I use those numbers. It'll be reversed out of that, and that's a state grant with a value of $135,000. And the reason why those charges were made to that line is because those grants were not either, either received yet, or they were not created. Both have since happened. So we would process what we call journal entries or expenditure transfers and reverse those charges out. However, there are also some charges made to that line that we will need to transfer into that line to, to cover those deficits. So I'm well aware of that.
But that money's been spent already?
Yes, it has.
It has?
But again, right. But again, we're going to be reversing...
And where was, where did, and who did, where did they go? Who went where?
Sure. I'd be happy to answer that question. Again, I provided a summary total for you. I'd be happy to get the detail of those charges and send those to you and to the committee in an email.
Yeah. That'd be fine, because, you know, it just seems like a lot of money that's, we're 10 weeks into the school system, and under traveling expenses or conferences, we've got almost $6,000 spent. I just think the committee should know where and who went, and for what reason.
So, if I may, to jump ahead to the FY '18 budget process, one of the hiccups, and that's a term that I use that I've discovered, is that there aren't accounts established for curriculum, finance, human resources, et cetera. And I'll stand corrected, but what I have seen is that that one line has been used historically for any and all professional development travel cost for any central office administrator. And for me, that's a problem because on the end-of-the-year report, as you know, it is a misrepresentation of, of those, those numbers. Because in essence, what those numbers are saying is that that superintendent's line, those charges are solely aligned to the superintendent's line, when in reality, those costs may be distributed or allocated between the school business administrator, the curriculum director, the human resources director, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that line is an example, and something, I'd sent out an email just prior to coming in here tonight, that's why I was running a little bit late, that one of the things that you will see going forward in the FY '18 budget is an alignment of the expenditures with the end-of-the-year report. Because there, there are several lines in the budget that I have seen where charges are commingled. Example, overtime is commingled with the custodian's salary line. So when you look at a custodian's salary line, and you look at the expenditure in that line, it's misleading, because it not only may reflect an encumbrance for that custodian, but there may be overtime charges to that line, as opposed to segregating the overtime charges from that line. So there are those types of hiccups, if you will, that we're going to clean up, correct, as we move forward in, in the '18 budget process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No further questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Deedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to see, determine next regularly scheduled school committee meeting date? The 6th or the 13th of December? I'm not sure if you want to do the 20th or the 27th with the holidays. It's the flavor of the day.
No. No.
No. The 6th?
What's, what's?
Or the 13th of December.
I would defer to the, to Dr. Heisinger and see what she thinks is the...
I think earlier in December would be better.
Yeah, because you're going to have lots of stuff to do, yeah.
Do I motion for the 6th? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's motion, the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to members, members forum. Are there any members that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Bishop?
Yes, Dr. Heisinger, you mentioned that you had put together a roundtable, superintendent's roundtable. I was wondering, and I was wondering if there was any, why there was no school committee representation on that? Is there a reason for that?
No, Mr. Bishop, other than a simple oversight, but I would love to have a representative from the school committee.
I'm not volunteering.
That would be wonderful. You took the words right out of my mouth.
I think Dr. Page was looking for something to do though. No, I just, I don't know if anybody's interested in serving on that, but I think that would be an important piece of the puzzle, because at some point, the receivership will come to an end, and I think that the more school committee, I, you know, I may be on a school committee for a year or two, or maybe 10, I don't know yet. But I just think that the more the school committee members have recognized what's going on, and hearing from the other people, all the other stakeholders, I think that that would be a very valuable thing to do. My other thing is, I, I very seldom hear from people, but I have had some concern about the Latin teacher at the middle school. Can you bring us up to date? Have we been able to secure a permanent person for that position?
Right. So we hired an individual for the position, as you know, at the beginning of the year, and that person did resign, and then we hired another one, and that person also did not work out. I believe that they are about to, if not already, have submitted a recommendation for an additional Latin teacher. So we're looking to, to fill that finally.
I, I know. It's a tough position to fill, it's like a chemistry teacher or some of these other specialty areas, and it, it is a challenge. So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I could let that parent know.
Yes, sir. We share that same concern.
Any other, any other members?
Again, just real quick, is it possible, Dr. Heisinger, if every employee of the system, hopefully maybe by January, if they were able to get a hard copy of the turnaround plan? I know it's on the website, but when you have something that you can bring you, bring with you places, I think there's a possibility of looking at it more. Teachers could maybe refer to it more when they're together, compare notes on it. I mean, I'm just asking if it's possible.
Absolutely. We can, we can print off all of them. It's just there's a cost to printing them off, so...
Would the committee have any problem with that, or? I just think, do you have any idea about the cost?
I can look into it. I know that many members of the school community have them. They've printed them off, or...
Right, that's why I asked, I had it.
Or they received them when we did the turnaround plan rollout. There were copies that were handed out to the audience. But I can inquire with the SEA president, and maybe he can put an inquiry out to find out the numbers so that we can get a cost.
Yeah, because I just think it'd be nice if they could have it in their hand, if they're together places, they can refer to it, make notes, see, see what they're accomplishing, what's not being accomplished. Because, you know, to go to the computer all the time, it's like, you know what I mean? All right, thank you.
You're showing, you're showing your age, Mr. Tolan.
Are there, are there any other members that would like to speak at this time? If not, do I motion adjourned?
No movement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, unanimous?
Thank you.